Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. First item is call to order, Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the next item here, I wanted to have someone come here tonight and talk about what he's been doing at Havens Park for several years. Chris, do you want to come up here? This is Chris Hendrickson. Chris has headed up a group known as the Trail Mob and has been working at Havens Park for at least, since at least 2015. Here's his information he has on Facebook. We do the dirty work. We build and maintain the trails at Havens Park. We're affiliated with the Leavenworth Bike Club, and the membership in the Leavenworth Bike Club is encouraged due to the mutual support and shared interest of our two groups. Almost weekly, he posts updates on social media encouraging this group to work on the bike trails running through the park. They have done grueling work, almost by hand, building bridges across ditches, cleaning miles of brush to create riding paths and walking paths. We walk them up there, too. They have formed various named trails from easy to very challenging for the riders. Havens Park is a true uncut gem in our community, and we are thankful for his dedication and service in making this park inviting for our community. I would like to now present and have him speak a little bit about what he does, the Mayor's Award for Community Service, to Chris Hendrickson.
Well, the park, building the trails in the park kind of came an idea back in 2014 with Julie Anderson. I met with her, came up with some ideas, her and Steve, and one of the main things with Steve was like, hey, just don't build stuff where you have to mow around. Unfortunately, I did get, when I was working on a house fire, I did sprain my ankle, so we weren't able to actually start until 2015, around January. That's when we just started. So a lot of times we had to mark the trails, cut the trails, and then cut it down, smooth it out. We have a total of about four miles out there, total. There's about a three-and-a-half mile complete loop if you just do the one main loop. There's been about 1,500 volunteer hours out there since we've started. We've had a long list of volunteers, such as Josh Strutton, Matt Morgan, Justin Ding, Lance from the Santa Fe Bike Shop, Lyric from Merryweathers, John Marshall, Roger Harrison from the Lions Club, Anita from the Leavenworth Bike Club, and my son. I bring him out there all the time to work on the trails, especially when he gets in trouble and gets grounded from video games. I'm also, Bob Wooton, he's also been a huge help out there. This year, he spearheaded the race. We have a race out there almost every year. Last year, we didn't because of COVID, obviously, and this year, we maxed out at 70 racers. And we were able to raise enough money to donate $250 to the homeless shelter. So that was also a big. There's also been a lot of businesses that helped out throughout the years, too, as sponsors, such as Complete Heating and Cooling, Dunright Plumbing, and Jerry's Nursery, and Merryweathers, and also Shields. One of the biggest complaints we do have, that I do hear, is that there is no bathrooms out there.
Yeah, we're working on that.
It has been kind of a problem we did have out there. Like, we had to rent porta potties for the race. It didn't cost us $300, but we still did pretty well. The new upcoming thing I see up there is NICA, National Interscholastic Cycling Association. I believe they're out of the port. They're just kind of, they're just starting up, I believe, so they are kind of working out there. It's kind of like for kids to start cycling. So that's the upcoming thing. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
No, I remember Mr. Henderson, what, three years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, and it's really good to see you, and thank you for your continued work on the park. That's fantastic, and I do think we've paid some attention to that requirement for, um, first.
I've been after that for years, so.
Right. So, thank you, and everyone who's part of your group. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Your volunteers helping clear the paths. How many got horrible poison ivy or ticks, or both? Did you run into a lot of that?
It does become, it does become a problem with the poison ivy, but the paths are cleared pretty much for the most part, and every spring, there's a little bit on the side, but it's usually not too terrible.
Yeah, but people working on it, when they first cleared it, I'm sure it was tough on some of them.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for all that you've done.
Right.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, well, no, thank you very much. I live just right down the street, so I go up there occasionally and do the walking paths. But, no, it looks great, so thanks for contributing that to the community. So, and, yeah, I'm excited as well to get that restroom up there, and then, you know, you can even have more events and such.
Well, Chris, I told you I wouldn't keep you very long. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you'd like.
Oh, good, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and I encourage the public, you know, everybody, go out and see this park.
It's beautiful.
I mean, it's always been my favorite park. It's a big, beautiful place, fall, winter, it's beautiful all year round, so come out and see Havens Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Are there any questions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve minutes from November 9th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Five to zero, thank you. Second consideration ordinance, 8180, amending, whatever, allowing animal boarding facilities to register animals for the city. Mr. Kramer.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, there have been no changes. As a reminder, the title of the item does a good job explaining it. It just adds boarding facilities to those who can offer registration for animals in the city, just more chances for people to be able to register their pets with the city. So, no changes from first reading.
Okay, thank you. This requires a roll call vote. Please begin with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Five to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, public comment. Anyone here from the public care to comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Do you want me to say something?
Yeah.
Oh, you can't.
Okay. Commissioner Cause, you have something for us this evening?
Sure, I would just love to make sure that you realize that on December 1st, there will be a ribbon cutting for the Eisenhower Road project, and would love to see all the commissioners attend the meet. The, I think that Mr. Kramer is aware that the ribbon cutting is scheduled for 1:00 PM, and we'd love for any of you that can.
That was 1:30.
1:30, okay. 1:30? I'll find out about it tomorrow, but we would love for all of you to attend. We will gather, I think that what the plan is, is to block off the, one of the lanes, just so that people attending can, and then we will gather off, we're not going to have the ribbon cutting in the middle of the road, because by then, hopefully, we will have the road open to public.
Okay.
That's the plan, that it will be open, the barricades will be removed, but we will hopefully gather off in the field on the Business Park side over at 20th and Eisenhower, right there in that area.
Okay.
For the ribbon cutting, and then we'd love to have everybody from the Lansing side and the Leavenworth side and the county commissioners to get together and celebrate the early completion of the project.
Yay.
And, if at all possible, I think that, I think that the plan, I did the walkthrough today, this afternoon, or this morning, the four-way flashes are, I think, operational as of this evening, red for, is that, I think I'm correct with that?
They'll flash for about three days.
For about three days, they'll flash red. Everybody needs to stop, and the barricades have not been removed yet, but if we get all of the seating completed on the, you know, the sidewalk side, we want to make sure that all of the workers are safe before the barricades are removed, and, but once that happens, then the barricades will be removed and the road will be open to the public, and so that there is a possibility that that will occur by tomorrow afternoon. That's not guaranteed, but it should be shortly thereafter. King Construction plans to try to have the road, the barricades removed and the road open for the public to be able to use, and it's kind of exciting. We're ahead of schedule.
Great.
Great.
So, the project is going to be completed ahead of schedule, and it looks really nice. I did the walkthrough, and I think the punch list was not a whole lot of things on it, and so it's going to be a good deal for the city.
That's great.
And thank you for taking it over.
Thank you.
I know, that's good.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate you coming tonight. All right. Next item on the agenda, general items, consider cancellation of outstanding checks prior to 2020.
Finance Director Ruby Mullin will handle this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you this evening is our annual review of outstanding checks that are over two years old. According to KSA 10-816A, checks that remain outstanding after the period of two years of issuance may be canceled by the City Commission. The city has 19 total checks that equal $1,527.45 that remain outstanding after the two years. I believe in your packet, there was considered, or included, a list of those checks. If anyone, we will also publicate, publish the list, and if anyone has any of those checks, can present them, and we will reissue them. We'll avoid the current ones, but then we will reissue new checks, so.
Okay, good. Okay, any questions?
Historically, I know we do this every year, and go through the same thing. You avoid the check, but somebody presents it, they will issue them another check. In reality, after two years, do you ever get many people come in and say, hey, I just found this check, my dresser?
We've had, I think we've had one or two since I've been here that have found checks or have, you know, asked them, they said they've lost those checks, would ask for them to be replaced, but not very many, no.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, this.
Mr. Ross, I don't think Mr. Ross will come forward. Emmanuel Ross has a check for 63 cents.
63 cents? I doubt it.
Now, what about the one for 500?
Yeah, these checks that are canceled totals $1,527.45, just so you're aware of that.
That's a good point.
And so if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the City Commission approve the cancellation of checks that remain outstanding after two years of issuance, and that these balances, in accordance with KSA 10 hyphen 816C, revert back to the city fund upon which such checks were drawn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting, Mr. Prisinger.
Aye.
Aye.
Five to zero, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider award of wastewater treatment plant condition assessment.
This will be our Public Works Director, Brian Faust, and I believe we also have Tim Guarato, our wastewater superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The issue this evening is to consider approval of a contract with HDR Incorporated for a condition assessment for our wastewater treatment plant. The condition assessment includes a complete equipment inventory with estimated remaining life and replacement cost, structural evaluation of various components, a life safety evaluation of our belt filter press building that's combined with our administrative offices, and a process and regulatory evaluation. The city's wastewater treatment plant was originally constructed in the early 1970s and has been upgraded through the years. As the plant and equipment age, the likelihood of failure of individual components does increase. Over the last several years, there have been several significant failures, with many of the systems having original components that are now obsolete. Waiting for them to fail, trying to locate replacement parts, and integrating those parts into our system can be challenging and costly. Our wastewater utility needs to transition from being reactive to being more proactive. Moving forward, it is critical to assess our equipment, to determine the remaining life, replacement cost, and the consequence of failure for components within the plant. This gives kind of an overview of the plant on the screen. Based on what we have, we estimate 752 assets that would be included within this evaluation. In addition, changing regulatory requirements and advancement in treatment methodologies need to be reviewed, and the appropriate changes incorporated into the day-to-day plant operations. The city generally does use qualification-based selection to select engineers for project design and assessments. The city requested proposals from qualified firms that were interested in helping the city complete this. This included the condition assessment and equipment inventory to build a computerized maintenance management system. Once the condition assessment and remaining useful life tasks are complete, an equipment replacement schedule and cost will be developed. This will include structural repairs, cost, and a prioritized list. Also, a life safety evaluation of the belt filter press building, which houses the administrative offices and lab facilities. Options will be evaluated to separate the administration and lab facilities from the belt press. A process evaluation to review existing plant performance and evaluate alternatives for both liquids and solids. And lastly, a regulatory evaluation will look at several permit cycles to anticipate possible changes to our discharge permit. The city did receive four submittals, and after reviewing the proposals and consultant interviews, HDR was identified as the top firm. City staff did work with HDR to negotiate a detailed scope of services, along with an estimated engineering fee for the work. There are a number of deliverables for the project. They include the prioritized list of equipment replacement needs, includes a replacement schedule and cost. This information will be used in upcoming CIPs to proactively schedule and budget for equipment replacement. While unanticipated failures will still occur, a prioritized list, schedule, and cost contained within the CIP should help reduce our exposure to significant unplanned events. Also, a life safety evaluation of the building with options to separate our belt press from our administrative offices, recommended improvements to plant processes and operations to increase efficiency, and that does include options to dispose of sludge that do not include hauling to the landfill. We talked about that when we went through the waste management study. One of the things that may be proposed, oh, that's not good, are sludge rebeds. This is actually a photograph of Blue Springs. It's a 10 million gallon per day plant. We're currently at 10.35.
Yes.
And what they do, they dispose of the sludge on the reed beds, and that actually helps solidify the sludge, so we're not taking the same material to the plant or to, like, waste management, so. It's a good process, it's something that will be evaluated.
How many acres do you need for that?
Actually, Blue Springs is right there, it's all contained on site. We definitely have enough room out on site for this. The other thing that will be provided, planning budget numbers for future upgrades to meet possible discharge changes. Staff does recommend approval of the condition assessment contract with HDR for an amount not to exceed $178,000, excuse me, $178,810.
Okay, I have a question. You received four submittals, are these amounts included on here? I don't see any amounts.
So it's a qualifications-based selection process.
Okay.
So we interview the firms, really focusing on their approach, their understanding of the plant. We did pre-bid meetings with all of the firms on site, and then they come in and they present. We look for innovative ideas, we look for familiarity, we look for vision and forethought, and it was a unanimous selection by the selection committee to go with them, and then we establish a price.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Faust. These, the sludge reed beds, does it stink?
Actually, no.
Okay. No, I was just wondering. Is that?
Good question.
I know, yeah, I was like, well, it's going to sit there, and, yeah. Is that something that you're looking at now, or you're?
That will be part of the evaluation that we look at. One of the things that we identified with the consultant was the price of disposing of the sludge at waste management and other facilities has skyrocketed.
Yeah.
And we don't foresee that getting any better in the future.
True.
And so we asked them to kind of evaluate, well, if we can't afford that, what options do we have?
So this may be cheaper.
This may be cheaper, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, okay.
I've got one question. How long will it take for the condition assessment study to, how long will it take to conduct that study?
What, they feel they can have a draft copy to us within 120 days?
Okay.
What we ask for is to have that prior to going into the 2023 CIP season.
Okay.
So we'll definitely have some good information by then.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, this requires a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the condition assessment contract with HDR for an amount not to exceed $178,810.
I'll second it.
We move to second it. Please begin voting, Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Five to zero, thank you. Next item is consider the contract for janitorial service.
Mr. Faust will continue with this item.
The issue this evening is to consider entering into an agreement for janitorial services for four city-owned facilities managed by both Public Works and the Police Department. These facilities are the Leavenworth City Hall, the Animal Control Building, the Municipal Service Center, and our wastewater treatment plant. In 2018, the city selected Albright Cleaning Midwest LLC to provide cleaning services at the Municipal Service Center and wastewater treatment plant, while LV Cleaning provided the services at City Hall and at Animal Control. In September of last year, LV notified the city that they would no longer be providing these services. Therefore, in the fall of 2020, the city did request proposals from interested firms to provide janitorial services for all four of those buildings. In December of last year, the city selected Janicang of Kansas City to provide the service for 2021. The contract was for one year, however, there were an option for two additional one-year renewals. After reviewing the services defined within the contract and the performance of the vendor, staff felt that rebidding janitorial services for 2022 was appropriate. On November 12th, the city did receive proposals from three firms that include Southwest Janitorial, Albright Cleaning, and Janicang of Kansas City. Based on the proposals received, reference checks, and past experience with janitorial services, staff recommends awarding the 2022 services to Southwest Janitorial with the option for two one-year renewals for subsequent years. The yearly amount is $89,160.
Okay.
So, question, so this is the same practice that was used in the last item, based upon a proposal that's how the final selection was made?
So it's the best qualified bid.
Okay, is this standard practice?
So we still don't get to see the bids? We don't get to see the bid numbers?
Right, so, again, these are based on service contracts, they're based on the totality of it, including the, as Mr. Faust said, the references, the past history, and everything involved. That's how the bids are selected.
So we're not informed on that, just?
On what the actual bids were.
With the others?
Yeah, it's not determined based on the lowest bid, it's the lowest qualified bid.
Okay. Where is Southwest Janitorial Services located?
I believe their main office is in, what's it, Garden City?
Yes.
Garden City, so, wow.
When I talk to them, they do the city of Topeka, they do a lot of other communities.
Okay.
And I talk to them, because one of the concerns we had is their location, if the weather was bad, would they be able to get to the city?
I was going to say, it sounds like a long ways.
Right. What they said was they are actually going to hire local, if wanted the contract, to hire locals.
Well, that would be good. Just checking.
Probably the same people are cleaning right now, just working for somebody else. Good chance.
Okay.
I do have a question. So this type of contract's a little bit different. Do we anticipate maybe using this type of contract going forward a little bit more for this type of work?
It's not, so it's not a commodity. A commodity is apples to apples, who's the low bid? When you're taken into service, you look at, you take everything into account. Price, you know, is looked at, but it's also past performance, references, everything in total, so it's nothing new to do, to do a contract this way. You wouldn't want to do it on the lowest bid on something like a service, just because it's no guarantee of performance.
Well, that's it, you're saying, hey, this is what you need, can you provide it?
Right, as opposed to a commodity is, you know, you're buying the same thing for two people, who's going to provide the lower cost?
Okay. Appreciate that, yeah.
Did you have any more?
No, that's good, thank you for that clarification, yeah, because I was confused.
All right, any other questions? Conversation, if not, would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move that we award the bid for the 2022 janitorial services to Southwest Janitorial Services in an amount not to exceed $89,160, with the option of two one-year renewals for the subsequent fiscal years and the amount of $89,160.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting, Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero, thank you very much. Next item, first consideration ordinance, acquisition of land for K7 and Eisenhower Intersection Improvement Project.
Faust.
Okay, the issue this evening is to consider an ordinance authorizing and providing for acquisition of the private property by condemnation for K7 and Eisenhower. Following the procedures as outlined in the state statutes, the City Commission adopted Resolution B 2300 at your November 9th meeting. The resolution declared the necessity for acquiring private property through eminent domain and authorized the survey and description of the land to be condemned. The next action requires the adoption of the proposed ordinance as prepared by the city attorney. The tracks to be acquired in this area by condemnation are described in the attached ordinance. The city needs to acquire a temporary construction easement, a permanent drainage easement, and some additional right-of-way, as shown on your screen in the different colors. Detailed legal descriptions and map for the parcels have been provided by a land surveyor licensed in the state of Kansas, and they are included within the ordinance. Our consultant has maintained contact with the property owner, and they are continuing in their efforts to reach agreements on the easements and right-of-way. Staff's opinion is that we need to proceed with the condemnation action until the easements and rights-of-way are obtained.
Okay.
The cost of court-appointed appraisers, payments, and calculated values of easements to be acquired, attorney and any other related expenses would be paid from the project budget, and is the city's responsibility. Staff does recommend placing the ordinance on first consideration.
Okay, any questions?
Are you here, are you getting some positive feedback from Home Depot Corporate on, they want to do it, or they still plan it still?
They've actually brought in a local person that we can talk with, and so our consultant is working with the local people, and we're exchanging information that's better than we were.
Okay.
So we're open.
But we should continue moving, just to.
Well, and as a reminder, the state has told Lansing that they cannot put this out to bid, because it's a state project, but Lansing cannot put this project out to bid until we start this process and have addressed this issue.
Okay, got you. Okay. Any other questions? If not, do we have a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, sir. Next item, Mr. Consent Agenda.
I think this is officially the record-setting meeting.
We're not done yet.
I moved to approve the claims for November 6th, 2021, through November 19th, 2021, and the amount of, net amount. in the amount of net amount for payroll number 23 effective November 19th in the, hold on.
There's no, there's no amounts.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just noticed on both of mine.
I'm tripping.
Yeah.
I've got it though.
I've got it here.
Yeah, I got it.
You got it?
In the amount of $788,916.84. And that amount for payroll effective, payroll number 23 effective November 19th, 2021, in the amount of $347,461.48 and 48 cents. Includes police and fire pension and the amount of $8,804.19.
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. And please begin voting, Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 All in favor. Okay, last item on the agenda is the presentation to outgoing commissioners, and I'm gonna do this at the podium. Mr. Griswold, would you like to join me?
Sure.
Mike Griswold, I'll be sorry to see you go. Other than, but, other than Commissioner Griswold's regular commission duties over the past four years, Mike's time as mayor has been devoted to leading Leavenworth through the crisis we've had. The year was fraught with changes from one week to the next. He handled it calmly, conducting many Facebook Live town halls held throughout the year, informing and updating the citizens as information changed on the disease, and then informing the public about COVID relief funds available for businesses and nonprofits. His systems analyst background has served him well, as he has scrutinized each agenda and project, which we very much appreciate. We do, honestly. Thank you, Commissioner and former Mayor Griswold, for your leadership and service to the city of Leavenworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your recognition and kind words. Very generous. First, I appreciate the recognition very, very much. Second, I extend my thanks to the city manager and his team for your dedication and professionalism. Next, it has been my privilege to work with my fellow commissioners. My thanks to each of you and former Commissioner Larry Dedeky, who I served with for two years. Finally, I appreciate all the citizens of Leavenworth and particularly those who understand what it takes for a commission to get things done and also who make a good faith effort to provide commissioners solid feedback. I enjoyed my term on the commission and I'm proud of what we were able to accomplish in four short years. There have been many long-term improvements to Leavenworth City. I will name just a few. Establishing a rental property coordinator's office to resolve disputes between tenants and landlords. A robust stormwater management program. A $2 million-plus annual pavement management program. Making significant upgrades to three major parks. And one that I'm particularly proud of, developing a vision for Leavenworth and a 2030 comprehensive strategic plan, which came about through a sustained process of about 16 months that included, at the forefront was our engagement with our citizens and other stakeholders in the city. And hopefully, this plan will guide the city for the rest of this decade. Good luck to all three of you and the new commission as you begin your new duties in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Prisinger.
Commissioner Prisinger.
Good luck. Good luck to you in this term.
Commissioner Prisinger. Commissioner and former mayor, three times?
Correct.
Three times. Commissioner Prisinger has been giving his all to the city of Leavenworth for over 10 years and to Leavenworth School Board for many years before that. How many years was that on the school board?
Eight years.
Eight years. Mark is a product of Leavenworth, having lived here since he was a child, is a successful businessman. He has raised his family here with years of dedicated and thoughtful service to the betterment of our community. He always said his goal is to make Leavenworth a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Hope I'm not taking your thunder there. His passion is evident. I've known him for many years, many, many years, and still marvel at the way he can quickly break down complicated tax and financial issues. I understand he's a pretty good algebra teacher, too. Over time, of the time he's been on the commission, he's worked tirelessly to bring in more hotels and businesses and create unprecedented progress to improve our city. And he worked to lower the mill levy while doing that by over 30 mills a few years back. Thank you, former mayor and Commissioner Prisinger, for your leadership and service to the city of Leavenworth.
Nearly 60 years ago, I first came to Leavenworth. In the first, in the first three days I was here, I met my future wife and we've been married 46 years. We have two children, a daughter-in-law, and three beautiful granddaughters. We have lived and traveled throughout the U.S. and the world and made the decision to always come back to Leavenworth. I wasn't born in this country, but at the age of 18, I made the conscious decision to become a citizen of this nation. Ever since that time, I have served in the support and the defense of my community and this great nation. I'm very proud of my nearly 21 years of elected office on the school board and the city commission. Although all my votes could not please everyone, with every vote, I asked myself, what is the best for the overall good of Leavenworth? Unfortunately, this city and this nation are in unsettled political times. False narratives such as the city has sold Club Venom for $1, which is completely false as, as it has not yet been sold, that another mask ordinance and a vaccine mandate was in the offing, which is another lie. Crime is not running rampant in Leavenworth, nor was there ever a discussion of defunding the police. These falsehoods have been promulgated by little persons, persons little in stature, with little hands, little honesty, and little integrity. I find it very troubling that persons are willing to compromise their integrity in order to influence a local, nonpartisan election. Leavenworth is moving forward. People are moving here. Houses are being built. New businesses are setting up shop. Leavenworth is becoming a destination for families and businesses. I want to thank and recognize the staff in the city, all that are here and the ones that aren't here. There are professionals at every level, hardworking men and women who come to work every day to make Leavenworth a better and safer place to live, work, invest, and raise a family. You forgot invest, Madam Mayor. Please realize these employees are real people with hopes and dreams for themselves and their families. Always recognize them with dignity as they perform their duties. I will now take my leave with my head held high, my integrity uncompromised. I wish the new commission nothing but the best in placing the best interest of Leavenworth ahead of all else. The area and population you are elected to govern is greater than that of any school board member, any county commissioner, and any state representative. Do what is right for Leavenworth. God bless Leavenworth and Godspeed to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Okay, now we'll go around the table. Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, just a couple of quick notes. Reminder, next Tuesday, the 31st is a fifth Tuesday, so we will have no meeting. Trash service, although the city is closed on Friday, the trash service will resume on Friday. There simply will be no trash pickup on Thursday, on Thanksgiving. And that is all I have for you and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You, too. Commissioner?
Just want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Same with me, yes. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving and a safe weekend.
Okay, Commissioner?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving and thank you, Mark Prisinger and Mike Griswold for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to serving this community.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
It's not an easy job. I came in four years, four years ago with you all. You all have taught me a lot and I appreciate everything that you have done for the city and the time that you invested often into me as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you for kind words. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you all. And all I could add to that is, thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Both of you. And what, we had a mayor's tree lighting the other night and everybody was there. It was so fun. It was fun to do. Mr. Kramer's daughter flipped the switch and she did a great job. I was looking around for her and she was right, right beside me there. So that was wonderful.
She made the paper.
And she made the paper, yes. And anyway, that was my last big event as mayor this time, so I really, really enjoyed that. That's my favorite event and I want to thank you to the, the, we tried to thank everybody the other night, but it was a little noisy out there. So thank you to the city. Thank you to the Parks Department. Thank you to the Evergy, which I think I forgot the other night. Thank you for everyone for coming out. Thank you to the vendors that came out, made it a much more festive event and fun event. And thank you, everybody, for that. That's all I have. Have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. And please begin voting, Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.